I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, see for Captain Swanson, do you do roll call first, please?
Ms. Ms. Dowen.
Here.
Tom Hastings is absent. John Glando.
Here.
Ron Spears.
Here.
Steven Harper.
Present.
Mickey Holtz is absent. Beth Williams.
Here.
Ken Ratliff.
Here.
So I got a call from Tom, he's detained, and he'd like to be excused, and Mickey gave us heads up at the last meeting that he wouldn't be here. So a motion to excuse those two?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to excuse Hastings and Holtz. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, now, we're at the meeting agenda, I think, first of all, I'll announce that Amy won't be here. She had a family medical issue for one of her children, and let's see, and then, okay, and there's something else?
I'll move that we amend the meeting agenda to strike Amy McGuffin for report, and also to add the consideration, under new business, item C, to consider a general service agreement with Time Saber PC, Cleveland, Washington.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to amend the-
Question? Question?
I got it.
Are we adding something to the agenda?
Yeah, he did. He did. Under C, a general service agreement with Time Saber's PC.
What's it for?
That's what we'll discuss. That's what we'll discuss.
It's for general-
We'll discuss it then before we vote on it.
We're not voting on it.
We're not voting on it. We're just putting on the agenda, and we can talk about it then if you don't want to.
Well, I oppose putting stuff on agenda, it's a short period of time, we don't have the time to get to it, so I would prefer that we put it off until the next agenda, and give us the information we can study on before we vote on anything on this.
Okay, well, that's how you feel about it, but is it moved and seconded? Is it been moved and seconded?
Yes.
Yes. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. And we can discuss it? Okay. Okay, so that's the agenda. Now, I usually don't get, we don't usually get words of compliments. But we did get an email from a person whose name is Sandra Salzberg, and this person says, the subject is Tesla Superchargers. "I want to compliment city staff on the location and operation of the Tesla Superchargers in Cleoylem. I have charged at many Superchargers in Washington, Oregon, and California. I charged Wednesday and Thursday in Cleoylem. Yours are the only chargers with additional EV chargers. The stalls are plowed, and there was a trash can available. Far different from the, than many other charging locations. The proximity to Gunner's Bistro is a real bonus. My compliments to your planning and public works staff." Sandy Salzberg, Olympia, Washington. So I thought I'd, that came out of the-
Wish Gunner's Bistro knew about that, too.
Yes. We can have, send a copy to them.
I've moved Gunner.
Yeah.
It's surprising how many cars are stopping in there. True.
It's a nice town.
I was kind of shocked that there'd be three or four stacked up at a time, but they're there, so.
Makes sense, we're on a freeway.
Huh?
It makes sense, we're on a freeway.
Hey, there you go. You know, in the old days, we had a lot of service stations, and we lived off gaps, pumping gaps, and a lot of tow yards, service stations.
Tremendous amount of them. For sure. Okay, that's it for announcements, so we're down to the consent agenda.
Moved that we have to accept consent agenda.
No second? Moved and seconded to accept consent agenda. Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? So now, we're down to officers' reports, and we'll hear from Rob first, our city administrator.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Really, not a whole lot to report since the last time. The mayor and I did go to a WCIA full board meeting Friday. Always interesting and fun to go to those. Before that, right before the board meeting, there was a training session about homelessness, really, and it was quite interesting stories, and it's, I guess it's comforting, you know, that big cities, small cities, they all have similar problems, so that was, it was a good little training, opened our eyes on some things. Last, last time, I believe it was Mr. Harper that was asking about the Kitcom outage, so I was, I went to the Kitcom meeting, and it's very technical stuff, but basically, it's called the SS7 layer, SS7 layer. It's basically a software that transfers phone calls very fast, and it's, for the most part, it's very solid, it's been running probably, don't quote me on the years, but a lot, a long time, 10 years probably, and it's only done this maybe twice in those 10 years, and obviously, it's fixed now, and that probably won't have that same problem again. So that, that was, it was kind of a, not only statewide, but it was actually country, only nationwide in some parts, so, somebody pushed the wrong button or something, I think. Other than that, we've been, you know, end of the, end of the year, there's, there's a lot of things we need to, I've been working with the treasurer to try to get some beginning balances squared away, but other than that, just day-to-day operations going smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. So now, we'll listen to our planner, Lucy.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. So, a couple of recaps. We talked last time about the AWC City Vision Magazine that we are going to be featured in, and that photo shoot was today in the rain, and at the time of the photo shoot, there wasn't very much snow on the sidewalk, so that was good. And they're going to, will probably get approval of that magazine in the next couple of weeks, and I think that the, I think it's coming, going to print on, I wanted to say the 3rd or the 4th of February. We also, last week, had a really good meeting with HLA and our city staff and the Billings Avenue intersection, landowners of Four Corners there, to talk about the project that's coming up this year, and everyone was very pleasant and agreeable, and think the project's a great idea, and there were minimal changes to the preliminary plan coming out of that meeting, but we'll be talking with them some more. We also, last week, had a meeting, a town hall forum, to discuss the winter parking with, at Denny Avenue, Marion Drive, and Mike might talk more about that. And then, we have upcoming this week, later on Thursday, I believe, we have a, what's called a community assistance contact meeting with the Department of Ecology for floodplain ordinance. In 2016, we had a required periodic community assistance visit, and Rob basically handed that to me halfway done, like, right when I walked through the doors, first day of work, and said, "Take this for me," and so-
Did you get it done yet?
I haven't gotten it done yet. No, I got it done then, but this new person with the floodplain program of Department of Ecology is going to come and meet with us. I guess the community assisted contact meetings are the, in between the community assistance visits. So they basically will let us know, maybe what we could work on, what we can look at in our ordinance, if any, the rules have changed on a state or federal level, and then, when we get to the community assistance visit, whenever that happens, we will be already ready for it. And it's also, they're going to provide me a bit of training as the floodplain manager for the city, a little bit more training. I've been to floodplain management training, but this is just supplemental to that, so it'll be helpful. And then, the other thing I've been working on a lot over the last week, week and a half, is the, a capital budget request to the 2019 legislative session for our downtown project. It's a $4 million legislative proviso ask, and we will be, we've been working with Judy Warnock's office, Senator Warnock, and her legislative aide are going to intake our whole package. We're going to give it to them tomorrow, and then, they will, it is our understanding that Senator Warnock will sign it as a sponsor, send that off to Senator Curtis King, who's the ranking member of the Transportation Commission, and then, we, on the other side of that, HLA has been working with Senator King's office and aide to set up a meeting, so we will be going to Olympia, meeting with Senator King, once he's received that legislative proviso package from Senator Warnock, and hopefully, that all also coincides with that AWC magazine, we'll be able to bring him as well, so. A lot of things are coming together for the downtown, so cross your fingers on that. That's it? Any questions?
So the intersection she was talking about is where Shell, Monroeville, and- It was a good meeting. They, they were, generally speaking, happy to see it happen. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Rob? If not, we'll go to our Public Works Director, Mike Campbell-Hart.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, again, I would just like to emphasize winter parking. As Lucy mentioned a little bit earlier, we had a really good roundtable, I think it went really well. Got some community insight from the residents up there in Denny and Marion about the parking ordinance and the time that they park out there on the streets, or have to park out there on the streets during the winter. Along with that, I think it went so well, and I mentioned before that one of the things I want to try, that kind of gave me a little taste on how I think it's going to go, which I think is going to go good, I'm really going to start pushing and pursuing the Public Works Open House, and along with that, I have a meeting later on this week with the Career Center Specialist up at the high school. I want to kind of do a little dry run with that, get the high school kids involved, bring them down, like, to the water treatment plant. I've been working with Willie up at the water treatment plant, and we're going to do an open house forum with the kids to start off with. I think, you know, the science class, any of you that have went up to that water treatment plant, it's pretty, pretty intense, pretty elaborate chemistry-type stuff that happens, so I think it'd be great for the kids and for the public to kind of see where their drinking water comes from, so we're going to start with that, escalate from there, see how things go, so we're working on that. Continuing to perform snow and ash removal, we've already called the guys tonight, while I'll be out at 5:00 in the morning, out moving snow, so you can all get to work in the morning. I put in your packets up there a couple of pictures, the new airport sign is installed, so far, we've gotten some great feedback on that, people really like it. We also installed a sign on the city shop. We've had a few deliveries that have gone astray, because they seem to not be able to find the shop, because it's never been labeled, so we went ahead and put signs on the shop, and so far, feedback from that has been pretty good. And then, the other one is, you'll notice, some shipping containers. We finally got the house, the old house in the yard there demoed and removed, graded and compacted the yard there, and got some storage containers, so we can continue to reorganize the shop down there and get some of our inventory under control. I'm working with some of our suppliers, we have some inventory that's been amongst our inventory for several years, and if it's in still good, good shape, they're actually going to let us return it, so some of the 10,000 different couplers we have, we might be able to get some of that returned, and that would be awesome, to be honest with you. The merry-go-round is completed, I'm scheduled looking, watching the weather, and when weather permits, we will announce it, and have a big shindig up at the park, and reveal the new merry-go-rounds, or the freshly rebuilt, I should say. That's it.
And I have to tell you, it looks really good. Painted it, new bearings, and who even knows how long it's been there? It's tradition.
60 years?
It'll be faster than ever.
It's only as fast as a person can push it.
They'll be one of the last ones out there, so it's-
Yes, so-
There's not very many of those around here. The south folks go out there?
I don't, that's going to be fun. Okay, so we'll listen now to Mr. Scott, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of council. So 2019 kicked off pretty, with a bang for us. Literally, within the first few hours of the New Year, New Year's Eve, we were involved in a pretty massive brawl up in Roslyn. Street was packed with a lot of brawlers, and that resulted in three individuals being arrested on felony assault, so it was kind of a busy night for us, and then, since then, within the last three weeks, we've had some, several higher-end type cases that we've been working on, kind of keeping us busy, so, you know, this is not a sign of things to come for 2019. Councilman Harper, just since he talked about the 911, I just kind of want to tell you how we responded to that. We did have two officers working, so because the local phone systems continue to work, we kept one officer in the office, and then, we had another officer, and his, his rehearsal purpose was to just stay this, with the thought that, you know, maybe somebody needed to be flagged down or something like that, so that's how we addressed that, that situation. Unfortunately, we didn't have any events. Lucy attended so many meetings, she failed to mention this one, but if you recall, several months ago, there was some strong discussion, consideration about shutting down your Upper Peals, your West Sides, your, those type of roads on three-day weekends, because the citizens up there are not happy with the excessive traffic up there, and so, it's been a position of the city, that if that was to occur, occur up there, then it would kick all that traffic down into Cleoylem, and we've already have obvious issues on First Street and Second Street, and so, the concern would be that it would just create an exponential traffic impact for us, so Lucy and I have been attending these, these traffic task force meetings down at the senior center about once, once a month, so a lot of work still ahead, a lot of different opinions on this, so.
But they look, they look like they're, the county's going to do some modeling, and not just make some quick decisions that could impact us, they're going to use the data to show what the impacts would be before deciding.
Thanks to Lucy's recommendation. Very lastly, you know, maybe you've already seen this, unfortunately, on social media, so last Friday, around 9:30 PM, night similar to tonight, minus freezing rain, that was, that was occurring on that day, Officer Flick was proceeding up 903 in our Ford Explorer, he had just passed the police department, he had just passed Denny, he was heading that way. At that same moment, a passenger car was coming from the other direction, didn't necessarily appear to be exceeding at a, proceeding at an excessive speed, the vehicle, for some unknown reason, lost control, spun sideways, entered into the officer's lane, and impacted the officer's vehicle, as you can see on the side door. Fortunately, there was, both vehicles had airbag deployments, our officer was able to extricate himself from the car, make dispatch aware, unfortunately, the passenger in the other car wasn't trapped, so the fire department was called, and he had to be cut out of the car. Gentleman was, was hurt, and not that he was transported to Harborview, and most that we know right now is he's reported to be in stable, stable condition, so you can see from the conditions of the vehicle, it was a pretty serious incident. Sent our officer to the hospital just for, just for a precautionary evaluation, but he, he was able to come to work the next day, so he's doing okay.
So the driver was not injured?
No, at this point, what I failed to mention is, we don't investigate our own incidents, so we brought in the Sheriff's Department, they have an accident reconstructionist, they came in, alcohol's not to be, not to be involved, no excessive speeds, it was just a really bad night, so we're still waiting on a report from the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you. Now, we're here from our chief of-
Honorable Mayor, City Council, really didn't have anything to report on, but due to Scott bringing up the 911 incident, I did get a page on my phone, woke me up in the middle of the night saying that the system was down, it also informed me that the station phone would be accessible, and it was advising people to call the station, so I went over and manned the station for a couple hours, and then went home, so we didn't have anybody call, we didn't have any calls, so the system, the backup system were put into effect, and those seemed to work, so just here to answer any questions if you got any.
Next thing. See some comments on our agenda items. Anyone out here?
Anyone?
Clamoring, talk to the council? Oh, okay, well, you get your chance. So then, under public affairs, of course, Amy won't be here, there's some public affairs, so we're down to new business, and this is Resolution 2019-001, hazardous mitigation grant application, so we'll hand that over to our planner, Lucy.
Okay, thank you. So, in 2015, the county, on our behalf, submitted a grant to, essentially to FEMA, it was through the Department, Washington Department of Military, and they, the grant was for bank stabilization measures along Hanson Ponds, the stretch of Yakima River that, that is visible when you go to the Hanson Ponds Park, and that bank is eroding at a pretty steady rate, and at that point, the hazard mitigation plan of the county was expired, and so, our application has been hanging out there ever since, and now that the county's hazard mitigation plan is nearly final, and we do have a formal annexation in that plan, and the required regular and consistent participation by city staff, we're now eligible for that money again, and the-
Is this what Rob handed you in your first take?
No.
No, not this one.
No. But this is something-
This has been hanging over the city for a long time.
So this has been sitting out there since 2015, and I started in 2016, so, but the, basically, the, the plan is now becoming final, and, or has become final, and the Department of Military representative has actually said that he wants to promote this project on his project list, which is really great for us, and we've been kind of plugging along for the last year or so, kind of updating them, and asking them a bunch of questions, so now, they're ready to actually be the advocates for this. The grant requests is for $3,000 to put in some engineered log jams all along that Eddie, the bank of that Eddie that's kind of causing the erosion issues, and also, the grant includes footings and abutments for a new bridge, so, and riprap and all of that. So I asked for the help of Christina Woolman, who is formerly with the county, who is the person who actually applied for this originally, and she's now with Partite, so she's helping us with the application, and all of this, I'm explaining it to you, so you kind of know what, what we're going for, but all this is, is just to ask that myself and Rob can be the applicant's agents, so that through the application process, we can handle that, and we don't have to have legislative action or council approval to get the application in. So that's all, all that this resolution asks for. Any questions?
Pretty complicated, what do you think?
I think it might be brutal.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to accept, or authorize the mayor to sign Resolution 2019-001. Questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
We'll keep you updated.
Okay, now, we have, the next one is 2017-07, and this is between, well, who's going to handle this?
Me.
Who's?
Okay. So, this, it, well, the task order is 2017, because I believe that the task order is for the comprehensive plan, which we, it's still the 2017 comprehensive plan task order, and that they just were amending that task order to include the land use element, and I just need more, more assistance from the engineers to complete the comprehensive plan update. The amount of work it is just to review and manage the consultants who are, who are doing the con-plan update is quite a lot, and the land use element is, what ties it all together, my thoughts were, rather than duplicate a whole bunch of effort, make it take longer than it really should, to tie all of those parts together, the person who wrote all those parts would be the best one to tie it all together with my undermined direction review, and we did build in this, these funds into the 2019 budget for planning, so this is just a request for approval to use the money that's in the budget.
I make a motion to approve Task Order Number 2017-07, which is an addendum to the HLA engineering agreement. Task order, amount of $15,900, going hourly.
So second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve Task Order 2017-07, a general agreement between City Cleoylem and HLA for con-plan. There's no questions, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's pass. So now, under C, we have a proposal from Time Saber's PC, and I'll hand it over to- And I think, I think that actually, this is, the reason why he's going to make this presentation, Rob should explain a little bit about why we want it.
Right, so we used to have a volunteer do our, a lot of our IT work, and so now, he's moved on to other jobs, and I need some help with IT work, it's, yeah, it's, it takes a lot of times, you know, not all the time, but just when I need it, you know, somebody just needs to be there, ready to go, and so, I've asked Steven to kind of step in periodically, and I think we need to make it more, and then, that's what this is.
So spent some time researching my relationship with the city, just to make sure that I was even able to legally volunteer services to the city, because even that could come into question. I am able to legally volunteer services to the city in other veins besides my elected capacity. Give you a little bit of background, is before I was an elected official in the city of Cleoylem, I did contract work with our police department, I went through their background check, fingerprints, training, et cetera, to be able to access the systems, and to be able to be allowed to work on a as-needed basis. It's been sparse, they really, they're able to do most of their work, but I was there in emergency situations, if they needed that. Also, the same with other departments within the city of Cleoylem, I've offered, my company has been contracted, I should say, to, to do different computer work where it was necessary, again, it was never a continual basis thing, it was just an at-will call, which doesn't require a contract, people just call stuff and we do work all over the city. The reason why I'm looking to propose general service agreement is just so there's no ambiguity as to the terms. The city has always dealt fair, paid the bills, I believe I've always provided a good service to the city, but as the amount of work may change, having something memorialized would certainly be in keeping with the revised Code of Washington 42.23. Three things I'll highlight quickly. Point number six on, of that says, "The letting of a contract in which the total amount received in a contract or contracts by the municipal officer or the municipal officer's business does not exceed $1,500 in a given month." That's one of the, that's one of the states' caps whereby an elected official can, either their company or themselves, can be employed by a city in a capacity other than their elected capacity. Also, under page two, "The municipality shall maintain a list of all contracts that are awarded under this subsection. The list must be made available for public inspection and copying." So again, if I was to work without a contract, though I am a licensed business, so I do, would, it'd still be legal, it'd just be suspect, because people would say, "Who, who provides your services? Oh, they just do it under, they don't do it under contract? Oh, it's one of your councilmen?" It just doesn't look- It just doesn't look right. And so, in order to try to make things look correct, is another reason why the general service agreement. And then, lastly, I'll be recusing myself, because a municipal officer may not vote in the authorization, approval, or ratification of a contract which he or she is beneficially interested, even though one of the exceptions allowing the awarding of such a contract applies. The interest of the municipal officer must be disclosed in the, to the governing body of the municipality, noted in the official minutes or similar records of the municipality before the formation of the contract. That word "formation" literally means both parties sign. So it's just simply, writing up a contract does not fly in the face of the statute. But before it is formed or formalized, it needs, they can obviously, I can talk to it. And with that, I will be recusing myself, and maybe in the room for deliberation. The only last thing I'll say is, I don't need an answer today, but it was in the city's interest that I brought it today, as they have some common matters in the absence of their intent. Thank you.
And I, and I wanna ask, go ahead. Will, you wanna ask him a question?
Yeah, I can, I'm not voting, so I can answer any question.
When you go out there, when you come back, grab what's in my box and bring it to me, if you could.
Wow.
Is there any other question by council?
So, and the coffee is... So, I, I'd like to add to that a little bit. When, you know, Devin really did do a lot of work for the city, up the water plant, all the, over the library, all the place, and most, and it really was very helpful for Rob. And it was my suggestion that we get, hire someone for some additional help, and that's why we came up with this contract. I know for a fact that he, he is the backup and does the computer work for a number of businesses in town. And, and so if we do it this way, everybody knows what's going on. But go ahead, whatever, you know, what, what do you think, you know?
Will be, will he be the sole provider of providing IT for the city in Cleoam? Does this contract set him up as a sole provider?
Oh, no, it didn't, I, I can hire other people if I want, yeah.
And also, it's with his company, and he has another person who works there, who would also be doing whatever computer stuff.
Rick.
Yeah.
Well, since I used to work for the government, we used to have to go out for, kind of like a bid of people who would be interested in doing services for the city instead of, and is there any obligation for the city to do that?
It, it needs to be, this is just like an hourly-type thing, and so, I guess if it was gonna be a, a big, I, I don't know the threshold, but we're, we're under the threshold, yeah.
And also, it's just as needed, there hasn't been anything, and just, you know, in case Rob can't handle something, or he's busy, as, as an example, library, but go ahead.
Right?
Okay, well, I mean, you guys, is your discussion...
I think, I think just clear some stuff up, put some, transparent, put something out there where everybody can see it, so it's not like we're hiding it, or it's being sneaked into, and I think we ought to do that. Yeah?
Well, I've, I've relied on he and Rick Coleman for my computers for years and years.
So, do you wanna make a motion to accept this, or you wanna discuss it further?
Oh, motion.
Okay, motion to accept the general service agreement between the Time Saber PCs or second.
Second.
Moved and seconded to, to accept this general service agreement with Time Saber's PC. Questions?
I would rather, I would rather have something available there than tell them we can't have something available there.
Yes.
You know, and this, this just opened that up, and...
Yeah. It's above board.
You know, it's like saying, go down and pick up a hamburger, but don't drive on First Street. You know, it's about, what I'm saying, if we don't do it this way and get, get it straightened out. It's like get our computers fixed, but don't use that computer app. It doesn't make sense.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor of aye?
Aye.
Close? Okay, we'll enter into the assembly. Okay? Remind him to bring in the...
Bring in the box.
No, no.
Bring the box.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Okay.
And also, Stephen, the agreement was established. Okay, we're down to committee reports, and we'll hear...
I have something for a committee report. You just brought it to me. Utility committee. And I think two of the three members are not here, so I'm kind of speaking for them. We did it by email, but we got a request from a customer that had a water pressure collapsed. She called the city, Dr. Audrey, and there was a malfunction in the meter reading, so everybody couldn't see it. But right away, Bubba went out, and there was a problem. And the customer got on it as fast as she could, got it fixed. So the overage calculated by Audrey, including tax, is $156.51. We agreed that this was legitimate, that there was not a chance to know it ahead of time. It was between the meter and the house, and the customer couldn't have responded any faster. So, the committee is recommending that we apply credit for $156.51.
Sure carry.
Let's say move. Yes, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, questions on this motion? Not all in favor of aye?
Aye.
Close? Okay, that one's accepted, and that's it?
That's it.
Okay. Any other committee?
I'm a, I'm a... I'm a adjutor.
Oh, yeah, there you are. Yes. Oh, second, second. Needing a adjutor.